Testing.
So as might I say, the chair could not be here tonight and the committee has agreed to have Member McLaughlin serve as Chair Pro temp. Any objections? Okay, seeing none, we'll get started.
Okay, so we'll call the meeting to order at 5:38 PM and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So we're gonna start introductions with Member Glant.
Donna Glant, Ward seven.
Craig Chapantier, Ward four.
Elizabeth Eames, Ward three.
Janet Bowden, Ward two.
Phoenix McLaughlin, Ward one.
Jake Langley, Superintendent.
Karen Poccat, Assistant Superintendent.
So Member Parks, Member Heard, and Member Iman are all out excused for various reasons, and Counselor Harriman is actually on his way, but had some weather-related issues. But we needed to get started just for some timing reason, so he'll join us momentarily, we hope. So the next item on our agenda is a special item, which is a demonstration from the robotics team, as well as a field trip permission request for competition on April 5th in Springfield, Massachusetts. So whoever is up for that, take it away.
Good evening. I'm Rob Callahan from LRTC, and I'm delighted to be able to be here tonight to introduce our first robotics team. We are so incredibly proud of the work that they have done. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time talking about first, because I think they're gonna tell you about what the club has been involved with this year, their journey that they've been on, which has been amazing, and then to ask your permission to attend the district championships, which are in West Springfield, Massachusetts, in a week or so, which they recently earned the right to go to by virtue of their performance at the Coliseum in their, in their district Pine Tree event. So without further ado, I don't know, you're gonna start us off? So just introduce yourself and talk about which.
Hi, my name is TJ. I'm the electrician on the team.
Hi, my name is Judelson Gola. I am a drive coach and mechanical lead.
Hello, my name is Hamdi Mohammed. I am the human player and the lead fundraiser.
Hi, my name's Honora White. I'm lead programmer and driver.
Hello, I am Logan Warren, and I am the scouting captain. Coming out of our 2024 year, we had a lot to improve, and a big part of that was project planning and communication. We did very well in our build season. Everything was on track, and we went to our first competition in Falmouth.
So going into Falmouth, we knew we weren't gonna be the best team there. We had a lot of challenges, like our robot did not move in the first couple matches, but we problem solved and we fixed it. And we ended up being on Alliance Six, and we got into semifinals, which was unexpected, and we prepared for Pine Tree. Yeah.
After our Falmouth event, we, for the two weeks, we prepared for Pine Tree as we changed our rubber, fixed some mechanical issues, programmed and electrical. We went to Pine Tree confident that we were gonna perform well, and through the play, through qualification matches, everything went well. We faced some setbacks, but we were able to problem solve through everything, and we were picked by the second-best alliance in the event. We served our way through playoffs and came out finalists and got silver medalists against the top two robots in the world, and we earned a spot to New England Districts that we are going to go in nine days.
For all of our events, we have fundraised over $9,000, and once we came out of our Pine Tree event, we realized we need to put some more emphasis into fundraising. And for the last week and a half that we've been going as hard as we possibly could on fundraising, today we are here to ask for your permission to go to Pine Tree Districts next week, and we hope that you would be able to continue to support us as you have been in the past six years. And we actually have one of our medals for you guys here, our silver medals that we won at Pine Tree a few weeks back. Now approach. Thank you for, thank you for listening to us ask for permission, and thank you for all the love you've shown our robotics team over the past few years. Without the, without your support, we don't know where we would be right now, and we're extremely grateful for what you have done for us. And after you decide on permission, if there's anything you could donate us, anything, we'd grace, we gracefully accept it as we are working hard to acquire the funds for district championships. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So, okay, you're bringing something up there.
Do you have any questions for us?
Yeah, any questions, Member Eames.
I'd just like to know what the different roles mean, like human driver and coder and such. Like, what does that mean?
So there are different positions on the robotics team, different subdivisions, so that we can work more efficiently. Programmers would work on the code of the robot. Our mechanical lead would help design and physically build the robot. As leader of fundraising, I have dealt with fundraising policy, acquiring funds for all of our trips, getting all of our team members active in fundraising, and then in the game itself, there are some more roles. For example, Honora is our driver, which means she's the one with the controller driving around the robot. We have an operator who isn't here today, Hunter. He controls the other moving mechanism. He controls the arm and the shooting mechanism. Judelson is our drive coach, and he basically helps guide the operator and the driver while they can make, they make decisions on their own. The drive coach kind of helps steer them. And as human player, I get my own separate task. Usually it's to feed pieces onto the field, like throw game pieces onto the field, or interact with the game pieces on my own in some way. This year, really, my only job has been to take ball and just throw it into a basket, so.
Member Bowden.
Yes?
Thank you. First, I want to say you guys have done a wonderful job presenting to us. I know this is probably very nerve-wracking for you, but you've all spoken very eloquently, and I'm really impressed with your public speaking skills. So, great job there. Congratulations on your win at the event that you went to. I'm just curious, along the fundraising piece of it, how much have you raised and how much money do you need to go to this next competition?
So throughout the season, we have fundraised $9,000 in order for us to pay for our events and to pay for food. So far, all of our events have been in the state of Maine, so that we, we have not had to do overnights. But for districts, that has changed, and so we are looking, we are looking at $14,700 for districts, and majority of that is going to be the overnight. It costs, it's going to cost us $6,000 to, $5,000 to actually go to the event, for our robot to be allowed into the event, and the rest is the food costs over the, over those few days, because it's going to be from the second to the fifth, and the lodging costs, which is our greatest expense at $8,000. You're welcome.
Member Glant.
Same as Member Bowden. I'm really impressed. As she said, it's not easy to get up and speak, but you all did a really good job, and thank you for that. My question is, are the, you're missing a person. Are you a six-person team, or are there other people involved?
There are more members. This is simply some of our members. It's our senior members, and I'm a junior, and there are many more members who aren't here. Round 15, we have increased the amount of members here since last year, and it's helped us tremendously, especially fundraising-wise, but it's also helped us spread STEM more throughout the school, as more people are interested, and we're just happy to give them that opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Any other questions from the committee at this point? I did want to ask, so what, so you said you need $14,700 total for this next part?
Yes.
What have you already raised, and what more do you need?
So far, we have, from outside donations, we have around $800, $870, and we are waiting for some checks to come in from businesses, so we don't have exact money, exact count on the money elsewhere. Please, yes.
Hi, I'm Kathy County. One of the lead mentors, John Dresser, couldn't be here today, and then my son Alex Willett is also back there. What's happened is, we, as Hamdi said, we raised about $9,000, which got us to this point in the season. So we've, those were our expenses, and we covered that with our own fundraising. We do have several checks. I have not had a chance to go back in and count, because we've been getting them since the day we returned from Pine Tree. I know we're up around 2,000 at this point, but we have a lot of promises. I just haven't seen the checks yet. The turnaround time of just over two weeks is very difficult for us, because we do spend our year fundraising. We feel incredibly grateful to be where we are. I don't know if you caught the emphasis that the team was trying to make or not make, but we've come a long way since, well, really since January. So we are working on this. I don't know if you were on the board a couple years ago, but we were able to raise most of the funds, and with some help from our friends, but the community really stepped up and supported us, and we're hoping that that's gonna continue to happen. I'm sorry, that's not wicked specific, but it's only been a week and a half. So no, it's not. Today's Monday. It's been a week since we got back, so.
Member Bowden.
This question's actually for Jake. Jake, do we have, are we able to pull this money out somewhere in unfilled position or something to help them out?
Do you, go ahead. If I might, I just sort of add, so I did have the opportunity to speak with Principal Radke this morning, and I think between the two of us, in various student activity accounts and things, I think we have somewhere in the neighborhood of $9,000 to contribute to this, to this amount, with the understanding that this group will continue to fundraise, which they do doggedly, so. But, but I think that's something that, that is a combined piece of this student activity effort, that we can contribute to their, to their travels.
And we've been talking behind the scenes, so as they looked for that, I do believe that we, as the district, could close the gap, whatever's remaining. Again, it's been a short turnaround as far as booking and committing. The registration fee for First Robotics is quite costly, and I think that's a big piece of it, but I do think we could close the gap if the school committee approves.
Member Bowden.
I guess I'd like to make a motion then to approve the field trip request to attend the competition in Springfield on April 5th, as long as nobody has any objections.
Okay, so I'll say moved by Member Bowden, seconded by Member Chapantier. Just a logistical question for the superintendent. Does this need to be a separate motion from the funding? The field trip request approval from this one?
No, I think financially, unless there's a reservation, we should be all set to, to close this one. From my role, I can, I can find those dollars. But one thing I did want to note is, Member Harriman didn't show up. I don't know if he wants to come up to the, kind of walks back there.
All right, yes, please join us, Counselor Harriman.
I think a motion to approve the field trip is sufficient. We can find these funds.
Okay. Okay, Counselor Harriman, any, any questions or thoughts you wanted to add on this?
No, I've just been listening from the audience there and totally in agreement with, with the committee on this.
Okay, so the motion on the table, so all those in favor. It is unanimous. Thank you all very much for coming, and best of luck.
Thank you so very much.
Yeah, also take your medals.
Yes, you guys keep it. You guys keep it. Yes.
Congratulations, guys, and best of luck.
And Director Callahan, it's, it's my understanding that after competitions, if the robot survives, we could do a demo? Yes, we'd be very, very happy to bring the robot in, just the inclement weather and everything else, and the fact that it's literally still being worked on as we speak. We'll, we'll make sure that this team gets back to talk to you about how their district experience went, and then show you what the robot can do, which is really quite remarkable. I'd just like to take a really quick second to recognize three outstanding Lewiston Public Schools employees, though, that really, when, when I say this is a full season, a year, that their season for this team is the entire school year. So they start early in the summer, they're working on recruiting new members, they get a box of parts from First Robotics that literally you have to figure out how to build it, how to strategize, how to fundraise, how to inquire and incorporate new membership in, and be creative. Every robot is different, and that's a good thing, and then they're meant to interact with their teams. But I'd like to introduce, we have two of our members, Kathy County and Alex Willett here tonight, and John Dresser is back in the lab, our mad scientist that is helping bring all this together, and they are outstanding. So join me in giving them a round of applause.
All right, thank you all so much. Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you, good luck.
So next on our agenda is budget workshop item, so take it away, Superintendent.
So the first item we have tonight, and I'll share some slides, is Director Jen Tiner is here for adult education.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to be back. So I have a few slides to share with you tonight regarding the Lewiston Adult Education Program. As Superintendent Langley has mentioned, I'm Jen Tiner. I'm the director. I'm also Director of Auburn Adult Education, so it is a shared directorship between those two programs. And my assistant director is Razal Ward. She unfortunately could not be here this evening, but sends her wishes. So the first slide, I like to just kind of highlight what's going on in our program generally. You can see that we have 25 staff members. That includes a few volunteers that we have. We have some people in our community who have worked in education for a long time, who have come back to volunteer with us to provide English language instruction. And then you can see the breakdown of our student enrollment right below that. So important to highlight from that is 1,478 multilingual learners. And on the next slide, which I'll reference in a little bit, you can compare sort of what that enrollment looks like historically, but I'm happy to share with you that it, it has increased. So our enrollments in our multilingual programming continues to, to grow. And then we have our adult basic education through adult secondary ed to college and career access programming at 240. Our workforce programming tops at 201, and enrichment is at 392. Those numbers come from the beginning of February, so I would even dare to say that those numbers are probably even more now than they were when I put these slides together. So all totaled, our student population represents 60 countries, 38 languages. 55% of our learners are multilingual. 6% are between the ages of 16 to 20, and 21% have a bachelor's degree or higher from their home country. So we kind of talk about adult education programming every year and kind of go over what, what are all the aspects of what we do, and I think a lot of folks don't realize the diversity of the programming that we run through adult education. So in our program in Lewiston, which is a, is a fairly large program in the state of Maine, we do run three different sort of branches of programming. So we have a whole gamut of academic classes that include our multilingual classes, English language classes. Okay, let's not mute me. There we go. And then through high set diploma and college and career access. For workforce programming, a couple years ago, we added an apprenticeship pathway, so it's pre-apprenticeship through apprenticeship pathways, and I've included on this slide, a brief description of all the different types of workforce programming that we provide. In addition to anything that's currently listed there, we also have the ability to do sort of customized and contextualized programming with local employers. And one of the new projects that we started this year is workplace literacy, and we're doing that currently with Central Maine Healthcare. So we actually go onsite at Central Maine Healthcare a couple days a week and provide onsite English language instruction to their employees that are currently in their sort of environmental services department and looking to hopefully move up once their language skills become to the point where they can take on some more technical opportunities within the hospital. So that's something new that I wanted to make sure to talk about this, this year. In addition to that, we have a whole host of enrichment classes that we run, so those are our community education programs. Hopefully, some of you have taken part in some of those, and I just chose some of the ones that we're offering this semester that are a little bit different than what we normally do, and they're really fun, and it's nice to see community members come in and, and get to experience adult learning with, with people in their community. In '26, we're looking to add phlebotomy to our workforce programming, so we have a plan to start that pathway, hopefully even before summer. We're in the process of developing that right now, and we're hoping to continue an expansion of the workplace literacy. So what we're finding is that employers really benefit from having some opportunities to have instruction onsite, and I think that's something that the community would really like to see us do more of, so we're excited for that. Next slide. So again, I talked a little bit about the increased enrollment, so I, I actually, on this slide, I like to pull out the numbers historically, so you can see back to 2020, and of course, that was COVID, so those numbers are obviously impacted by the pandemic realities. But you can see how we have grown even from then. And again, I mentioned to you, the 1,478 multilingual learners there on the slide 24, 25, up from last year. We actually have seen since January that there's been some, some slowdown, I would say. I think Liza mentioned that too, when she gave her slides about the multilingual department. We are still seeing an increase in growth, but certainly the pace of that growth has slowed a little bit. I'm happy to share. Again, I was here last week to talk to you about the high-performing status of our program, so of course, I wanted to make sure to mention that as a highlight from the school year. We also launched our new Maine Resource Center. Some of you were able to attend that open house. It was great to see you all there. I asked Fosia, who's the coordinator, if she could share with me kind of what her current caseload is, and for her, she's currently working with 94 internationally-trained professionals. So those are folks who have come to Lewiston, have come to Maine, and they're really looking for opportunities to take their credentials that they've, that they've received from their home countries in fields that they may be able to utilize those credentials here in Maine, and she works with them to help them get those credentials evaluated, to take a look at where opportunities exist for, for those folks to use their credentials locally. So 94 people currently leveraging those services. We had a successful pilot with LRTC this year to do some technical math instruction, and I think probably Rob will talk a little bit about that when he comes up to share his slides, but we're really looking forward to continuing that work in the coming year. Kind of goes along with our pathways to success for students, and looking forward to more opportunities to do that. We've added additional outreach at New Beginnings, so we have a staff member who goes to New Beginnings once a week to do, at drop-in times, to be able to connect around educational services for youth who are either out of school or struggling to come to school and be successful at school, so we can talk about use of adult education as a pathway for those folks. I talked about the Workplace Literacy Pilot, which is something that's new this year, and we're hoping to expand with Central Maine Healthcare. We had a civics week this fall, which was very exciting. We had a lot of conversation around what is civics? What is democracy? What does it look like locally? And then we actually held a mock election, so you can see even one of the, one of the pictures on the slides is our student putting in a ballot into the box, which was pretty fun. And we just had an SEL Wellness Day on the beginning of March, so similar to what the district does with SEL work, to highlight the, the work that we do with SEL. We do a Wellness Day, so it was on Friday of that same week, and we had teachers run workshops around wellness and health, so they did all kinds of different activities, like crafts. We had crochet, we had zumba, we had music and dancing, lots of things around food, so Taste of Maine is a really popular one for our students to learn about what are some of, what is a neetum, or what is a whoopee pie, or what are these things called red snappers? And so it's kind of fun for them to sort of see and try out. We had some Brave Souls try moxie, so that was fun. And then in addition this year, because we wanted to even improve what we did last year, we offered some student-led workshops, so we had some students who are bringing in some cultural diversity into the health and wellness with workshops that were led by them, and we had some community members come in. So we had the First For Me Childcare Group come in to talk about childcare pathways and opportunities for our students to maybe do some work, substitute teaching in childcares. We had the LA Community Market, which is developing a shared marketplace down in, in downtown, and they wanted to come and talk with students about opportunities for them to be part of that as well. And then we also had a workshop around how do you read with your children, and we were able to leverage some support from the district to get some of the Lewiston Community Reads books and to provide those to parents, so people that we're serving that are adult learners who are also parents of school-aged children in the district, to both have them have the opportunity to learn what it's like to read to the, to their children, to interact and engage with them through that reading process, and then to actually give them copies of the book, so they could take them home, which was pretty exciting, too. You can see, we've had a lot of different, there's some pictures up there and a testimonial from one of our students, who is one of the people that's working with Fosia and the New Maine Resource Center. That's a picture from our open house, a doctor coming in, trying to, to figure out sort of what her next steps A doctor coming in trying to figure out sort of what her next steps are. I skipped the part about the employer partners just for a moment because I wanted to be able to read to you a list of our expanding partnerships. We have many employer partners in Lewiston Adult Education. We've had a long history of work in the healthcare with different companies, organizations. So Clover, St. Mary's, Central Maine Healthcare, and Marshwood or Genesis Health. When we started our teller training program, we had one employer partner, which was Andrew Scroggins Bank. And I can tell you that we've added five additional banks. So now we have Key Bank, Northeast Bank, Camden National Bank, Norway Savings Bank, and Bangor Savings Bank are all partners in the employment training work that we're doing with our teller training. And then with our trades pathway, we continue to have a very robust partnership with Handel Brothers, but we've also added Industrial Roofing Company and Lewiston Public Works to the groups that we're working with. And those folks, they do a lot to support, not just coming in and doing guest presentations and workshops with the students. We have like the banks, they actually, some of the banks provide kind of in-class instruction directly with the students. They have simulation classrooms, so you can go, we can go in and access their classroom. They do mock interviews. They talk, they are able to really not just talk about work, but then go through the process of actually potentially hiring students when they complete those programs and have work authorization. Are there any questions for me?
I will just ask real quick, I'm not sure if this is a question best for you or for the superintendent, but I do, if I'm reading this right, the budget's actually somewhat down for adult ed for the coming year. Do you mind just giving some color or commentary on that change?
Sure, I can explain that. We had an increase in subsidy for two years. And now we've experienced, you know, the subsidy formula, it varies year to year. It's not based on enrollment for adult education. And so we actually are receiving, we're receiving less subsidy this year, which is why the total has gone down. And I know we were asked to talk a little bit about challenges too, to just talk about like, what are some of the challenges? And I would say that one of the continuing challenges that we experience is how do you continue to meet the growing needs? And trying to keep the intensity of instruction at the level that we know the students need to be able to make the gains, to be able to be able to be at their best when they, when they're done with school and having to go on to work full-time with fewer resources. So that's, that balance is a bit of a struggle.
So I would just said, it's about $34,000 less state subsidy this year. It's a two-year cycle, so we're hopeful that it probably won't be next year, but maybe. But then two years out, that subsidy may creep back up. Jen's done a good job trying to find ways to shave in-house. And also, as a reminder, adult education has its own fund balance that lives kind of separate, not kind of, it lives separate of the general fund fund balance. It's voted on separately as part of the vote. So Jen's done a good job with the resources she does have to try to be fiscally responsible for multiple years, just like we have with the rest of the budget. So she's used some fund balance and also has trimmed in a couple of spots to maintain the effort.
Member Reams?
I just am curious about 16, 17, 18-year-olds there. I mean, I could understand 19 and up or even 18 and up. But 16 and 17 surprised me a little. I'm just curious how that happens.
How does it happen that students set 16 and 17 join adult learning? So at seven, anyone by state statute 17 and older can come of their own free will and enroll in adult education. And certainly what we see a lot of is individuals who have stopped out of their education for a variety of reasons, right? So they may have had to go to work, they may have had a lot of transiency, mental health issues, all kinds of those same barriers that we always talk about. So 16-year-olds can join adult education with permission from the superintendent. So under sort of special circumstances, extenuating circumstances. And honestly, since COVID, we, as a state and as a region, as a hub, we have seen more 16-year-olds looking towards an adult education path. Sometimes because they just have been out of school, they just haven't, they haven't rejoined the academic high school experience. But we don't have, we don't have a ton of 16-year-olds. We have a handful of 16-year-olds who have come to us. But I think Jake and I are in agreement that we'd rather see a 16-year-old coming to school in whatever form that looks like than not attending. And so we work really hard to sort of figure out how we can best meet their needs. Yep. Yep.
Member Boden?
Sorry, Jake, did you have something to add to that before I talk?
I was just going to say, there's a, Jen does a good job with that screening process. We don't want to float the idea to 16-year-olds that this is the option. But for some 16-year-olds who have usually some pretty unique life circumstances, it is the option and it does fit their world. But Jen does a good job screening those, provides me a summary, we review them one at a time, and they do require approval. And I think we've done maybe five or six for the last 18 months or so. It's not a big number, but for some kids, it is a pathway, it is a possibility.
So my question was actually about phlebotomy. I'm excited to see that as a new offering on your list. I remember back in my much younger years, I looked into taking a phlebotomy course at Central Maine Medical Center and it was sold out, or sold out. I said that wrong. It was full. Every single time I went to try to get into that class, it was full, like the day that it opened, it was already full. So I know there's a need for it and I think that's great. So I'm just curious, will they get a full, is it a certification to be a phlebotomist by the, by the end of that course? Like, how does that work?
So when we, when we run any workforce program that we run is tied to a credential of value. So in this particular case, it's going to be part of the healthcare apprenticeship pathways, which means that there will be a single point of entry and then likely some multiple exit points. So we're still developing what exactly that looks like. But the intent certainly is for people to be able to gain that credential so that they can go to work. Yep.
It's really great to hear. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Member Glenn?
Yes, I'm out of the loop for a while, but GED used to be a thing. Is that still around? Is that still used? Or is it HST?
It's HiSET now, yeah. So it was quite a few years ago. I can never remember. Bill knows. 16, 2016. The state actually has, just kind of like when you have to RFP for pretty much everything, right? They send it out and they see where they can get the best deal. And in this particular case, HiSET came back. And so we stopped offering GED back then and switched to the HiSET. But it's the same credential, it means the same thing. Still five-part nationally-normed assessment, still reading, writing, math, science, and social studies. Yeah.
Any other questions from the committee? Superintendent?
Great, thank you.
So next up, we have Director Callahan and Assistant Director Rob Schmidt coming up to the podium and to talk about all things LRTC or CTE, but also Article III in your budget. And just as a reminder, the way their subsidy works, it's explicitly towards CTE. So that helps build up that context. So you'll see some ads here based on expanding programming, which I'm sure Rob or Rob will touch on. But I'll let you go, let's steal your thunder and we'll go from there.
Thanks very much. Again, I'm Rob Callahan, Director of the Lewiston Regional Technical Center. This is my good colleague, Rob Schmidt, who is the Assistant Director, who looks primarily after the programs that are based in Lewiston. And we're here to really share out some positive news tonight. We have had a really busy and productive year. I think you've seen a little bit of that tonight with our first robotic team. But there's a lot of good news from around the center on all three of our campuses that we want to talk about. And then get into a little bit more specifics about this budget request and kind of what's in it. So I'm going to start by asking Rob Schmidt to just sort of walk you through what the year has been like for us and what we're peaking into next fall, already looking, anticipating in terms of enrollments and whatnot.
Good evening, everyone. I am the other Rob, commonly referred to as anyway. I do primarily attend to the Lewiston campus. Matt West attends to the Auburn campus. I do enjoy going to the Auburn campus to see our programs over there. It's really pretty amazing. I'm sure you've all been there. Quite a sight to see the school, but also our programs. So there are some numbers up here that you can all look at. Last year, our enrollment was 865 students and currently we're at 981, which makes us the largest CTE school in the state of Maine. I dare say with our staff of 42 and our Director of the Year, as you all know, we are also the best CTE in the state of Maine. Our program applications for the last three years have averaged about 654. And this year, and that's usually right around April 8th that we take those statistics. We keep a running tally that, but right now, as of today, we're up to 716, which is, you know, right around 70 applications more than last year. So the guidance counselors and guidance directors of our sending schools have a really challenging job of deciding who they're going to place in our programs. It's not something that I would want to have to do. They take into consideration a lot of different factors. But the fact is, we have limited seats, as you all know, which is why we've expanded our programs over the year. So we are offering opportunities to more students than we ever had in the past. We have 25 programs on three different campuses. 18 of those programs are here in Lewiston. One, our Precision Machining Technology Program is at Central Maine Community College. And we currently have six programs at Edward Little. Next year, that's going to bump up to seven as our auto collision and composite manufacturing program will be opening next year. We're really excited about that. So that'll offer more opportunities for students to get into our programs. And it won't be a new program, but we will be expanding our relationship with Central Maine Community College. Our students will have an opportunity to take courses in their early childhood education program. And those details aren't quite worked out. We've been having some really good conversations with them, but whether they're in person or asynchronous, we're not quite sure about that yet. So that's a brief overview of everything going on and Rob will dive into the nuts and bolts of everything.
So just two, two quick pieces that I wanted to touch on, just in terms of, sorry about that, every time it gets me, that we're very proud of. The two programmatic pieces in addition to the ones that Rob spoke about. First is that in speaking with our partners in the guidance areas, one of the things that we find commonly is that our students sometimes do very well with us, but struggle in some of their core academic subjects. So much so that sometimes students have to withdraw so that they can remain on a trajectory to graduate. And that's really a shame for us. So one of the things that we did this year that we're very proud about is partnered with Lewiston Adult Education to provide a tech math course. Math is a big, is a big area of challenge for our students. We enlisted the help of Jen and one of her good math teachers. We built a tech math curriculum, which really dealt a lot around the construction trades. And our students have really, I think, made really good strides in terms of building math skills that will count for both credit towards their graduation, but also that apply to just the everyday working of a construction professional. So it was, it was sort of a good piece of relevance that students really seem to gravitate to, and we will build that out next year. The other program that I wanted to mention is this, our Expanded Learning Opportunities, our Extended Learning Opportunities Program that we, we began with the idea that we could get students into the community that had been with us for a year, had built some skills, but then could go to work directly for an employer who is looking for that kind of help, but also could be in a position to provide them with really extended educational and professional opportunities. So for example, Evergreen Subaru, Maine Oxy, a number of our local schools and daycares, our hospital, Central Maine, and St. Mary's have welcomed our students in. And we have somewhere around 30 students at this point, working on those campuses on a day-to-day basis, which is really exciting and I think really rewarding for our students. They feel as though that's a really important next step for them in terms of deciding on their professional path. And the employers are really pleased with the work that they're doing and feel like it's adding. So again, this is really a job interview that they're succeeding in and we're proud of them. So I just wanted to mention those two things quickly. The other thing that I wanted to mention, and it's always a source of pride, and we'll be back with our Skills USA competitors. You saw our first robotic students, which was extraordinary. We have our, most recently in Bangor, two weeks ago, we were, we took a group of 105 students, Rob, myself, and Matt and some of our other chaperones overnight in Bangor and participated in a two-day skills championship in Bangor. And this has the competitions from, you know, all of our hard trades, nursing, engineering, firefighting, which was brand new for us this year. And then it also has leadership competitions, extemporaneous speaking, medical math, related technical math, job interview, those sorts of things. And our students did exceptionally well. We, as I said, brought 105 students with us. We came home with 49 medals and 31 competitions, which is a record for us by a lot. And what I like most about it is I think it's a very authentic way for students to understand the relevance there, the skills they're building with us have in the workforce today. The competitions are all formulated and judged by local professionals. So it's not our teachers that are telling them they're really doing well. It's someone from Chimbro or someone from Bath Iron Works or from a medical, from, from Central Maine Medical saying, you've, you've got skills. And it was, it was an extremely rewarding couple of days, exhausting. But again, it showed that our students, that they have accomplished something that's unique, that they have skills that are relevant and that they can enter the workforce prepared to embark on a real, genuine pathway. So we're very proud of that. We'll be back with a few of them in just a week or two. We are headed to Atlanta, Georgia for the national competitions for those students. And again, they'd love to tell you about what they have accomplished there. I have a list that I'll share with Superintendent Langless of all of our students. We're on both sides this year, which we're kind of proud of too. So let's talk a little bit about our budget request. We're very proud of the fact that we, we believe that we are good stewards of the tax dollar. We understand the difficult task that this school committee faces each year to review the numerous requests that our good colleagues in other schools make before you. And again, our hope is to tell you a little bit about, about our plan for the coming year. Before I talk about that, let me give you just a very quick Superintendent Langless talked about the sort of unique ED279 funding formula that, that CTE schools in Maine have. So there is a funding formula that exists outside of the K-12 formula. And basically, the way that works is, is that the state annually reviews each of our programs, looks at the number of students that are in those programs, the array of programs. So for example, a welding program may be more expensive to run than a business program and develops a formula based on that. This year, based on our, our, the analysis the state did of LRTC, we are eligible for about $5.3 million in state subsidy. So that's what the district will be responsible, or will be receiving from the state. We, through our growth and things like that, have exceeded that. And again, we've come to you for, to look at that variance. Typically, that variance has averaged about $220,000, $230,000 in a given year. We have worked very hard this year and I'm proud to say that we're at $84,000 a year over variance. I would also say that I took very seriously the conversation that we had last year where this school committee asked about the role that other districts in the region were playing. I appreciate your support. We did a I appreciate your support. We did adopt a regional cost sharing agreement with each. So when we look at that eighty-four thousand dollars, based on, on the regional cost sharing formula that we have agreed to, Lewiston is responsible for about thirty-nine percent of that, which is about the, the total enrollment that Lewiston gets in, in all of the programs over, over a two-year average. Which means that's about thirty-three thousand dollars that we're looking to the Lewiston School Committee and Lewiston taxpayers for above that, above that state subsidy. Again, Edward Little and, and the Auburn School District, I presented there two weeks ago, they're responsible for about twenty-one percent. And then Poland, Okeo, Levitt, Lisbon are all responsible, just under ten percent each based on, on there. So, so they will be making, and this is a first for us, they will be making a contribution to, to defray that variance. Again, we are proud of the fact that our, our cost per student amongst CTE schools is near the lowest in the state of Maine. We feel like we deliver a lot and that we work hard to make sure that everything that we ask gets put to good use and it goes to serve students like we've seen here tonight. The three budget items of note that I would, I would sort of put before you in terms of, of this request in this budget. One is that the ED two seventy-nine formula serves us well in a lot of ways. It's deficient in a couple of ways in particular, and one is that it does not include equipment. So when you're standing up new programs, it would not, for example, with our auto collision, look at a spray booth or compressors or things like that. We have used grant money. We have worked with employers like Moody's to help bring down those costs and they've been very generous with their support. But there is some additional overhead that we'll experience as a result of bringing some new programming online. We continue to see inflationary pressure on particular hard trades so that our students that are working in wood and wire and steel, copper are all still at a premium. Anybody who's gone to Home Depot and, and had to buy a sheet of plywood understands what I mean. Again, we work really diligently to get, for example, you know, our steel coupons donated for our welding tests and things like that with some of our local regional employers. But again, that's, that's an area that we're asking for a bit of a, a increase. And then the other, and Rob mentioned this, when we are talking about nine hundred and eighty-one students, currently our staffing model is that we have one student services person. And that student services person is responsible for student support, student advisement as it relates to their, their time both in the center and then after that as a liaison to our budget academy program, working with our colleges and then all of our area guidance directors. What we are asking is that we increase that number to two, that, that person would be responsible for our programming in Auburn. And that again, they would provide a level of support that, that, you know, is appropriate, given the level of activity and, and the level of need received from students. Again, we, we are deeply grateful for the, for support that this school committee has shown us over the years. We're very proud of the work of our students. And again, I hope you will agree that, that the investments that the community of Lewiston makes in its CTE education pays dividends by returning folks that are ready to enter the workforce or move on to a two or four-year college and become productive, tax-paying citizens. So thank you, and I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Member Boden.
Thank you. Like I say it every year, but I'm always so impressed. I just, you can't even put a price on this program because it is invaluable. Like the kids, what they're learning, what they're coming out with, the jobs that they're able to get, it's just, it really is priceless. So any little ask from LRTC, I'm the first one that's like, give it to them. There's no risk there. It is all reward. And I don't know how you keep your budget the way that you do year after year because it's absolutely incredible to me. I did want to touch upon the student services position that you're talking about. I, just from firsthand experience, I reached out. My daughter's not even in LRTC yet. She's too young. And within the next day, the student service teacher had reached out to my daughter and, and had a little meeting with her. So I just, your whole program, I can't say enough about it. So I'm, I don't have any questions for you. I just wanted to praise you for all the work that you're doing.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions from the committee? Anything you want to add?
I think Rob covered most of it. We do plan on having, I believe, a video and some student recognitions and probably try to recognize Rob again on the seventh of April, which is our next regular meeting, if we can pull that together. And if not, maybe the meeting right after. But they will be asking to have some support to go to nationals, but they're also actively trying to figure out what they can currently. So that's a precursor. But I know we've been passionate for a long time about trying to figure out this tech math piece, but I think that there's other things that we're looking to do with that tech approach to grow the number of supports. Consider things like a, a tech ELA for an English credit or support for kids in that vein. We have for a long time run up against a wall of not being able to support kids who love the tech field, who are ready to go to work, who are struggling to get that last one or two credits to graduate high school because of that barrier. So we're looking to solve that. But thank you to Rob and Rob and Matt, who's not here tonight. Great job, you and your team. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, member Glenn.
Are you still doing the cosmetology program?
I'll tell you, this is not a secret. That has overnight become our most popular program, just in terms of applications. So every year, we can, by state guidance, we can enroll sixteen new students. We have sixteen first year and sixteen second year students. I probably have, I'm guessing about eighty applications for those sixteen seats. We have a very dynamic salon that's happening. We have done some days where folks have come in for updos, for facials. So that is an active program. And what I'm even prouder about is that we have built a program that is a pipeline for our students to complete their training. So it, it's about fifteen hundred hours of training that someone needs in the state of Maine to become a licensed cosmetologist. They're getting about seven hundred and fifty through us. And what that means is that they will have to continue on at either Aveda or Empire, which is sort of the finishing schools in the state of Maine. They're both excellent. So our students have toured them both. They have spoken with the instructors and they understand there's a pathway. But for them, that two years really allows them to, to get a, a real head start on their career. They're very excited about it. This will be our first year, it's the second year of the program, but our first year that we'll be graduating folks into those programs. You know, with that two-year experience behind them. So yes, it's, it's thriving and doing really well.
Member Boden.
I did think of a question. I just wanted to ask about the ambulance that we received as donation last year. How is that going and is it getting good use?
Yes.
Are we driving it? What are we doing with it?
We do. It's excellent. And I, I, it strikes me that at some point, I think Rob mentioned it, but I, in case anyone hasn't been over to our Edward Little campus, to our Auburn campus, we'd love to have you there. We'd host, leave that to Superintendent Langless to, to, to let us know. That we have a fire truck, we have a ambulance and we are waiting on the donation of a police cruiser from the Auburn Police Department. What we're really hoping is, is, is there was sort of an intentional grouping of those three programs in Auburn because we wanted a, a public safety cluster so that young people that are interested in a career in any one of those areas understand the, the way in which they work together. So yes, we do joint calls with the fire service, for example, or with our, our law enforcement, where they will go out. Our teachers will have a, you know, we have all kinds of mannequins that every time we walk into the shop that terrify you because they're hanging from ladders and everything else. But we do, we, we treat, we have stretchers that we will treat live patients in the stretchers, move them into the ambulance so that they are working in an area that will be, you know, really similar to, to when they become licensed. So yes, it's actively used. It's, it moves around the, the Auburn campus. Occasionally we'll drive it over here and work with nursing students and things like that, so they can see it as well. It's got a lot of really great equipment and again, was donated for the most part. The entire ambulance was pretty much donated, which was awesome.
Can I just ask on a different note? Were you about to add something? No. Of those six hundred, those seven hundred and sixteen applications,
Yeah.
do you have a sense of how many you'll have to turn down because of, strictly because of capacity issues?
Yeah. So we, we about somewhere just under six hundred, depending on how we, we configure some of the sections and things is, is our first in one-year enrollment. So we'll, we'll be saying unfortunately, no to, to a hundred or more of those students. We say that we waitlist students that every year that we would normally, they have the grades, they, they've been doing the work. And it's probably my, my biggest challenge is, is we had talked about, how do you grow both capacity in some of the existing programs like electrical or cosmetology that continue to be very popular, but also expand into other areas that kids continually ask, like cosmetology was frequently asked, you know, where's your cosmetology program? So we try to strike a balance between providing that breadth of programming and then the depth. You know, again, a few years ago, we came before you and said we had such a, a demand in the automotive area, we asked for a second instructor, a second bay and things like that, to which the school committee supported. So it, it's way more than I would like, I would say. Member Glenn, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Nope. All right. Thank you very much.
Just going to add, as a side, Rob's also, we're, we're engaging in a process to explore some funding around a STEM program that tied to the middle school. It's, it's early, but we, there could be over a million dollars out there for us to, to try to tap into to, to do some LRTC light with middle school or in middle school. So we'll see how it plays out, see what the funding does. Yeah, stay tuned. It's a very exciting opportunity. It's just come up, that there is some grant money that would put us on a pathway. They're looking for three or four schools in the state of Maine, CTE schools that have a partnership with their middle school. Luckily, you know, we have a wonderful middle school principal in Amanda Bryant, who has jumped right in. And we're collaborating on what that could look like in Lewiston and perhaps beyond. So, so stay tuned. Zoom is behaving strange for me. I might have to ask your questions after. So to move through like we have for similar articles and other items tonight, we just want to touch on LRTC, which we have in Lewiston Adult Ed, which we have. And also talk about what I, I coined a roll-up strategy, but it's, it's just an idea that you may, may not choose to accept. So some things that are in LRTC, which were largely mentioned. The, I think the, the biggest piece in the last two was the, there's new subsidy for new programs and the regional schools have been asked for contributions, which they've agreed to. This is a breakdown as you look at things from a differential from FY twenty-five and twenty-six. And anything differential that you see here, all, all except for that eighty-four thousand that Rob was mentioning, has all been covered by new subsidy. So you can see the percent interest, excuse me, the percent increase to the overall budget. And we have those in chart form as we did the other programs. So you can see the percent increase, that thirty-four percent increase is the insurance for the school. We've talked about that in other areas. There's building cost has gone up. And this is the dollar increase over FY twenty-five. And you can see that the, one of the shifts here is custodial staff. So we'll, this is another effort to try to maximize subsidy and make some corrections and, and move some things so that we can benefit our programs, but also maximize our subsidy. Overall FY twenty-six percent increase is represented here. Any questions about anything in Article Three?
Just a quick clarifying question. Custodial staff? What meaning? What does that mean in this context?
So I, I think you just pulled the wrong, the wrong table, yeah, out of there. So I can just say some percentage increases here. So broken down, much like other articles, except just realize LRTC has some of those things like custodial staff in it, tech staff in it, IT tech staff in it, just because of the way the funding formula works. But for teachers, they were up about fifteen percent. That was mainly due to the new position that was put in there. Ed techs was up about five percent, but that was all due to staff increases. Substitutes was just up a smidge, but really kind of flat where it was. Same with the teacher stipend area. That was, that was down just a little bit. Then other staff, that was up about twenty-one percent, but that was moving some of the positions in. Contracted services were up. Again, those would be some of the, the items that, that Rob had kind of talked about. And then non-salary, again, Rob talked about this as well, about an eight percent increase. And that's a lot to do with materials and projects and things like that. There is some utility stuff in there as well. So.
I did pull it up.
Yeah. So overall, the article is up thirteen point eight nine percent. But that represents point five six percent of the overall budget.
Any questions from the committee about Article Three numbers? Member Reeves?
Thirty-one thousand that we're contributing this year, how does that fit with that big number we just got?
So at the end of the day, our, the overall ask for LRTC is eighty-four thousand dollars above the subsidy. We are in the regional agreement responsible for a portion of that, based on the percentage, and it's an average over two years for student usage. And that's the, that's the other piece that other school committees are budgeting for, making a contribution that will go into revenue, which we've accounted for to balance our budget. Adult education was pretty straightforward. As I mentioned, Jen does that work with her own, within her own fund balance and making some changes and efforts to reduce costs for next year. There we go. So she has obviously some, some changes there. And we mentioned the thirty-four thousand dollars in subsidy. That was a hit for her, but she's been able to work through and appreciative of that. And then from a potential vote perspective, tonight's the night that you are able to vote. At least we presented the components of the budget. There's a, a potential motion here, but the bottom bullet I want to talk about first, as I, I mentioned the roll-up approach. Because we still have an insurance question, because that number won't be official for, we think, another couple of weeks. If it comes in sooner, we'll certainly make that known. That was that number that they said could be as high as seventeen point eight nine percent. And we budgeted ten percent, but that number is a range. It doesn't mean we'll land there. So when we have that number officially, we'll, we'll move with that. In addition, it seemed like there was some interest from the school committee to try to find ways to continue to support the special education effort, especially around instruction. I did talk to Director Craft. She has about, and I, and I say this as the, the best way I can, and I don't want it to come off crazy, but about ten different things that she'd really like to do. And I actually very appreciative of her. She provided good detail of the things that she'd like to do. And there's a whole range of things. I think we, if we budgeted another hundred sixty-five thousand dollars, it would, it would roll up to three point nine eight percent increase on the local bill rate. I just put four, but I, if we start adding pennies, it starts to jump over. So if we, if, if you chose to do that, it would allow for some funds for insurance adjustments, some. And if it's not needed for the insurance adjustments, it would allow for some decision-making around what to do to support special education. I think Director Craft wants to see how some things play out in the budget as well, as far as getting it approved at the referendum level so that she can, she can make some further suggestions. I do think she has some ideas. I think they would be tricky to move on until we have an approved budget. Certainly can keep you in the loop. So that would be, my pitch for tonight would be to keep us just under that four percent threshold. And again, that's on the local bill rate of, for an increase. And to do so, we would be adding a hundred sixty-five thousand dollars for use for insurance or special education.
Member Reeves?
At the Region Six Zoom meeting, there was a school district that said they had a, I think, twenty-three percent increase. And hence were shopping around because they, they couldn't accept that. Is that something we can do? Is that something we can do? Is it shopping around even a possibility for a place like Lewiston?
So I think anything's possible. Uh, whenever you change providers, there's a number of cumbersome steps. I I know what you're referencing because I was familiar with it, but just for uh, public consumption, shopping around for different insurance providers. Uh, because some districts, we're seeing a a pretty large increase. Uh, there are some challenges to that, and some of those things are woven together. So there might be other agencies that provide a less costly premium, but then it doesn't include things like vision or certain other components. So the healthcare industry, they're really good at making each other competitive with what they offer, what they don't, and at what premium. So it's it is a thought, uh, but I know that superintendents have been discussing what other options are out there and what might it look like? We, I have not seen anything that's less expensive. And I would also be very cautious as far as uh, the assurances go, because some of the better rates are to educators because of typically as a population, they require less uh, care than certain other populations that are higher risk. So some of the rates we get are good and they're, I know we do this every year, but I want to say they're stable uh, rates. And I just worry about making a jump to a major provider that could impact someone's care uh, or their premium situation, their deductibles, and then also see something shift the year after. The benefits trust does, I think, a good job trying to make sure they're providing for educators and and so it's it's a layer, but it is something that people are looking at.
Member Bowden?
Thank you. Um, so a couple of things. First, I'm I'm definitely concerned about the insurance rate. That's the only thing about this budget, honestly, that's like really making my stomach turn right now. Um, just because if it comes in at seventeen percent, that's wild. Um, what would would we have to reapprove for a higher amount if that were to happen?
So there's a couple of ways to approach it because we don't know how much. Uh, Bill, I'm going to ask you to look back at the notes. How much was one percent? I have a number in my head, but I will say aloud.
So you do it. A hundred and twenty one thousand per percent.
I was gonna say a hundred and thirty one percent. Uh, so a hundred and twenty one thousand per percent. So if it's good.
And well, we just budgeted at ten percent. So.
Okay. So.
Eight hundred thousand.
I'm, so maybe the budget draft has been updated. My last was updated twenty days ago, so on the fourth. Has it been updated since then?
So the the only changes that are made from like a bidder perspective, or if we find corrections or things like that, those get adjusted. But we haven't made any fundamental like big shifts in there. But once you just, if you decide to do X amount, uh, we could go plug those numbers in where they go. But things like salary and healthcare, every single employee has a line.
Yeah.
So it's it's a pretty big ask to go back and forth. We try to wait for the number.
No, that's okay. Um, so what I'm looking at though, um, I want to go back to fund balance because it looks like our next agenda item is to adopt this version of the budget. And I want to, I want to make sure we talk about more than just what's on the screen right now before we do that. Um, so we would be using three point four or three. How am I reading this wrong? Three point five?
As pre- as presented is three point four four percent of the local bill rate.
Okay. So and you want to increase the three four, three point four four to four percent? And a hundred and sixty five thousand dollars would bump that up to four percent?
It's actually three point nine eight, but yes, that was what I was thinking.
Doesn't seem like a whole lot to bump it up.
I was trying to stay under four percent, really.
Right, no, no, I appreciate that. And I think taxpayers appreciate that too. I don't think anybody wants it over four percent. So is that a hundred and sixty five thousand dollars? Tentatively for special ed? But we wouldn't use it for special ed. We use it for the insurance costs if the insurance costs came back super high. Is that what you're saying with that money?
Yes.
Okay.
I might ask a clarifying piece here of fear. Yeah. So can you talk about the process a little bit and explain, is there a reason we need to take this vote tonight instead of the April seventh meeting? Which I believe is our next scheduled meeting?
So I I think it's for collective sanity of all of us living in this budget, including teachers who are pondering whether or not they're looking for jobs elsewhere. I think they want to know if there's support from the school committee that has a number behind it that can be moved forward. That would be my thinking. It's it's typically around this time that this is done and and approved. Um, or at least talked about further before approved. So there is no like financial cliff or anything of of that nature to to do this um, tonight.
Member Glenn, do you want to just?
Yeah, this still goes to the city council. It's still actually twice. Uh, it will go to them and then the following week they will vote on it. In between, we do a town hall after that vote. Before it goes to a referendum on May fourteen, excuse me, May thirteen.
So just to state that part in the mic, so that the the city council um, meeting to vote on this is scheduled for April eighth. So the day after our next school committee meeting.
Um, so on April eighth, they hear it and they can provide feedback. It's the following week that they actually vote on it.
Okay, thank you for that. I didn't see some man's uh, member Reeves.
Yeah, I'm I'm most certain that it's May ninth that they vote on it, the week before it goes to referendum.
Thank you very much. Member Reeves.
Uh, when are we hearing about the insurance rate? What when's most likely date that we hear the insurance rate?
It's usually within a couple of weeks of the, um, I don't know that we'll have it before April seventh meeting, but it's usually that second week of April. Uh, they don't have a hard and fast date. It's like, get it to you by a certain date.
Member.
Early April.
Member Bowden?
Thank you. I just wanted to finish my thought. Which is, I'm I'm grateful that we're using about half of the fund balance that we used last year. Um, but I'm still super uncomfortable with it. Um, because I know that's also going to eat up. Is it over half of what we have left? And not a whole lot going in?
I would say not, not as much as half, but I it's it's around there and it may have another thought, but um, and then fund balance continues. So whatever's unspent this year, which we think there'll be some, but it's not going to be huge, we'll go back into that, that space. Any other reduction in fund balance would be an ask to the local.
So that's, that's why it makes me uncomfortable using this amount, but I understand we're trying to keep this down. You know, I would like to stay at the three point four four percent and I'm not going to lie. Um, I I don't want to not give special ed um, what they need to be successful next year um, by any means. And the insurance piece really worries me, so I really don't know if I honestly don't know if I want to up that to four percent or not, if I'm being honest. So I'm just curious what everyone else is thinking.
Member Glenn, do you want to ask that?
Yeah, what was our percentage last year?
A percentage increase last year, I think we, I think we landed around nine percent or just under nine percent. Yeah, do you recall? Maybe we got closer to six.
The the one that passed.
The the final approved looks like it was uh, up a dollar sixteen for nine point five five percent.
Nine point five five percent.
Correct. This is, this would be less than half of last year's ask.
And just to, if I could just clarify, when we're, when we're talking about this, we're talking about the percentage increase on the schools portion of the local tax raise, not the entire tax on property, just to make that clear as we're discussing it.
Right, the schools portion.
Right.
Right, we don't have any say over the city's city council's budget.
Are there other, yeah, member Bowden?
Sorry, just one more clarifying question. Um, does Director Crafts think that, I wish she was here so I could ask her in person. Is she able to survive another year on the budget that we are currently proposing without that extra a hundred and sixty four thousand dollars?
So my answer to that question, and I get to guide those is yes.
Okay.
We could live without that.
Okay, so I mean, we did, we did as a school committee give Director Crafts a lot um, in the last couple of budgets to get to get things changed and working the way that they should be working. And I think she's done an excellent job. Um, and not just her, like everybody in the special ed um, program has done such an amazing job getting this back on track and where it needs to be. And I do not want to hold them back, but I also, I also think that maybe this isn't the year for trying to keep the budget low after last year. This isn't the year um, to do more, um, but maybe keep it going, keep, keep what we have going um, and explore it next budget season. That's just my opinion, but I don't know what everyone else thinks. I'm having a rough time.
Other thoughts, member Reeves?
A lot. So much depends on that insurance rate, so it's so hard to make a decision like that. Uh, I think we could, so what you're trying to do is give us enough to accept the insurance rate as dictated, like we don't have any say over that. And then if that happens to be lower than we worry, it could be, then we might be able to move some of the money to the special ed um, efforts. But Janet, uh, member Bowden is trying to not do that second piece, right? So we're going to have to deal with the insurance.
It's not that I don't want them to get the money.
I I'm sorry.
I'm just, I'm just saying like, I think that maybe we should try to keep this three point four four and hope that it comes in at ten percent.
But the insurance thing is the key. So if the insurance comes in, where are we going to need to be more than three point four four? We're stuck. So is there a way to build it such that we accommodate whatever the insurance says? And then if there's wiggle room, then we can put it towards something we decide later.
So you could, you you could adopt a version tonight at three point four four percent as proposed, uh, which I would be a hundred percent fine with. That's, that's why I brought that number. Uh, the reason we looked at a different number was this insurance anomaly. And then also there was, it seemed like there was, I know you didn't vote, but it seemed like there was some general will to try to help special ed just a little bit more. Um, I would be fine with you approving a three point four four percent of the local as proposed. Uh, but then if we have some big anomaly show up, whether it's a big savings or a big cost, because this could come in neutral. Uh, we could certainly get it back in front of you to say, now we have a new fact. Wha- what would you like to do with it? Do you want to turn those savings into something else and leave it alone? Do you want to turn those savings into more for savings? And you know, those are things that you could revisit. Uh, but I think it lets the rest of our minds settle on, all right, this is the number we have, and when we get that insurance info, it'll also help us prepare for, uh, let's say it's higher. Uh, I know that me and the team can think of ways to try to deflect some of that cost, and we can bring that back to you in short order versus the anomaly of the whole budget still out there and and able to be discussed line by line, which it still is. I just think that it's a frame of mind of that's the school committee's budget. If new information comes up, we'll address it then.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to get at. Yes.
Councilor Herman?
Thank you, and I apologize if I missed this earlier, but can you remind us what was budgeted for an insurance increase and what the range could be as of today?
That we budgeted ten percent of our of our whole, and the range could be, it could be lower than ten percent, but they have given a letter to the the general um, folks that use the service that it could be as high as seventeen point eight, eight, nine percent, I believe. Almost eighteen percent, yeah. Now, as just as a note, and I'm just kind of the optimist in the group. Uh, we've gotten numbers, I think, two years ago, we got a number that could be as high as twelve, and we ended up at six. Uh, I've also heard districts think they're going to get as low as eight and end up with twelve. So it's, it really is a wait and see, uh, until we have that information. Do what we can.
Member Glenn?
I I do have a question about um, the ask for special ed. Will that affect our our momentum of where we're going?
I don't believe so. I think we're, I think we're fine at the three point four four if we, to continue to move like we've talked about this multi-year approach. I'm comfortable with that number to keep doing.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Herman?
Thank you. Um, personally, I would be, I would go for the the higher number. I mean, I'm just always in favor of more money for education, but I could certainly get behind the, just the number that we've been talking about, the three point four four percent, if that's where the majority of the committee wants to be. Um, I think that's on the city side of things. We, we've really held it to no new programs or positions this year. And I know on the school side, it's been almost exactly the same with the, uh, just a couple of exceptions here and there. Um, so I feel like uh, I would be fine with the other hundred sixty five thousand, but uh, I don't think it's uh, like you said, they they'll still have the momentum they need to to continue with the programs as they've been planning to do. So I think it'll still be, it'll still put us in a good spot.
Well, I might share a thought, uh, just to express my own opinion, which is that I certainly was interested in and am interested in seeing what Director Crafts had in mind for, I think, as we discussed it, potentially unlocking those uh, really filling the the seats that we have in these various programs. Um, however, we don't have that proposal tonight. And if we have uh, reasons to, that we have to get this voted on now, which I think makes sense. Um, then I I just, I'm not comfortable with voting on something that theoretically we might use the money for next. Well, I'm, I I mean, there's not that many things probably that we'd come back with that I don't like. Um, but I just don't, this doesn't make sense to me process wise. Same honestly with the insurance. It's like, if if we get a different insurance number, number, then we'll just have to deal with that. So I'm more comfortable with just voting on the budget that we have proposed to us, since that's what we understand and have gone through. That's how I'm feeling at the moment, but are there any other thoughts on that? Anything you want to share?
I just, I just want to make sure that everyone understands that Director Crafts absolutely did put together a proposal. It included a lot of if thens and was more full scope than a small ask. Uh, I I appreciate her for being comprehensive. I just want to be upfront with the committee. It's not that she didn't get us uh, something that we asked for. I think that there's a lot of moving parts to it that uh, would be far more costly than what I think the committee wanted to entertain. And included some pieces that are uh, could come to fruition once we have an approved budget, just to make some shifts anyway. And I I think that I wanted to be mindful of that.
Yeah, no, just to clarify, I mean, it's been less than a week, I think.
Yeah.
Since she presented, so I have no expectation that she would have that by now. So it's more just a timing problem, I think, on our end. So other other thoughts on anything? Uh, member Reeves?
I think what you just said is what we were all saying. I don't think there was a difference. So unless I missed something.
Councilor Herman, do you want to say what you were going to say?
Um, just going back to timing, so I have um, I have April eighth, which is a Tuesday, is the presentation to the city council. Um, May sixth, which is also a Tuesday, um, is when the council adopts the budget, both the city and the school budget. And then May thirteenth is the referendum vote. So.
And in between the two on the twelfth, we have the town hall that we'll try to get done here.
Yeah, so just to clarify what I was discussing, so particularly referencing what Councilor Herman was saying before. Um, if there's a choice right now between sticking with the three point four percent increase on the school portion of the local budget ask and three point nine eight percent. I, my preference would just be to do the three point four four right now, because that's the information that we have. So that's my, that's my feeling. And so I guess just to put it more clearly, does, is there anyone who doesn't feel that way right now? Okay. Okay. So good point, member Bowden. We are not technically on the agenda item yet to actually vote to adopt the school committee version of the FY twenty twenty six budget. So we'll start that agenda item now formally. Um, and normally this would be also a good time to ask if there's any members of the public who want to speak on an item, I believe, but I don't see any. So member Bowden?
Thank you. Um, I guess I would like to make a motion to approve, to approve the um, FY twenty six budget draft that we received that is the three point four four percent increase. I think I said that right.
Second.
Okay, so motion by a member Bowden, seconded by a member Sharptier. Any thoughts, questions, discussion, anything you need to add, staff, administration? Okay. Okay. All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Thank you so much.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by a member Bowden, seconded by a counselor Herriman. All those in favor? That is unanimous.